Jenny, could you call the role, please?
Instead of calling the role person by person, so I just want to point out when we did organize at the organizational meeting, part of those assignments, we also noted in that chart, the members, the total members of the committee. This committee is actually comprised of 10 people. So five board members and then Mr. Passage, Mr. Miller, Mr. Hatfield, Ms. Fuller and myself. So nine people are present and so a forum is established. So we don't need to call this is O'Connor.
Okay. Right. Would you like to join us up front? Sit around the campfire with us? Okay. All right. We are going to look at first any questions anyone had from our January 24th work session. Then we're going to talk about some of the options and possible grade configurations. So we'll start with at this point in time, does anyone have questions after they've reviewed the material that they'd like to have addressed?
My one was there a handout because I was on virtually for the last meeting, so that's my only.
Yes.
Yes.
Which is basically the condensed version of this. Sorry. Sorry, should I ask for that before the meeting? Thank you, Chris.
Anything else too?
That shouldn't be anything different than what she already had, right?
Any questions?
No, no question. It shouldn't be anything new for you.
Bring your mic far in a little bit so everybody gets recorded. All right, Chris, the floor is yours to discuss grade configurations.
Great. Yeah, I just wanted to go through and if you look in your packet and scope area two, there is a sheet at the very end called Lakota Schools Grade Configuration Matrix. I just wanted to get a little bit more in depth about this matrix and make sure that we're all on the same page. The previous board committee had went through this and we all agreed on which configurations would be most optimal for us to consider moving forward. So I just want to make sure the current board feels comfortable with those options. If there's anything else that you want to add, change, modify, we can do that this evening and go forward and look at those as well.
It's the grade configuration matrix, Chris.
Yes, it is. Yep.
Yeah.
Should be at the end, the very last page of your scope area two.
Can you remind us, Chris, which three options previous board I decided we wanted to talk about? I think I remember, but I just want to double check.
Yes.
It was a strong pull. It was not a vote of any. No, no, it was just a conversation, right? So we brought three forward.
Yeah, before it was just a conversation, what were your preferences would be? So that's what we decided to do. So the three options that were most favorable from the last time we spoke with option number three, option number four and option number five. So option number three is a standalone pre K building. A pre K three building. Four, six buildings, seven, eight. Option number four was a standalone pre K building, then a K three building, four, five, six, seven, eight building and a nine, twelve building. And the last one was a pre K standalone, a pre K five, a six, seven, eight and a nine, twelve. So those were the main ones that were considered last time. And some background with that, some of the things that we were trying to look at before was trying to minimize the number of transitions student had based on our current configuration. Because right now we have kids go to several different schools for pre K. We have two right now that have pre K in them. So we had a K two configuration for early childhood schools, three, six, seven, eight, a standalone nine and a twelve. So the ideal was to look at having kids in the buildings a little bit longer instead of the number of transitions. So looking at the options here, these were the ones that we felt not only had fewer transitions in some cases, but also aligned a little bit better with our curriculum and how instruction is delivered by the age groups and grade band. So that's why those options stood out. But there is any other option on here that you might want to look at or consider? We can definitely do that. Like option number seven was really looking at a pre K six building, like a mega building, that a seven, twelve mega building. Even though that may be fewer transitions, those mega buildings probably really don't make a whole lot of sense with 17,000 kids.
Right.
So, but we did look at it.
Mason model?
That's a lot.
It could be a Mason model, even our buildings would even be bigger than a Mason model. We have 7,000 more kids than Mason.
Yeah.
So.
If we did that, would we do that on both sides of the district?
That would be one pre K six and one seven, twelve.
There's a mega building.
Yeah, so.
So on the three options that were favorable last time, is there a pre K standalone in each of those? Is that what the first line and then also a pre K three?
I was wondering the same.
Yeah, it's more K three.
Okay.
Pre K, we got to look at that because there's different requirements for pre K. For the most part, we want a standalone pre K ability.
So it would be a standalone preschool and then
A K three.
K three, K three, K five. Okay.
Correct.
And not to make a judgment on it one way or the other, but why pre K standing alone? We have that now, but why would we maintain that not roll it into the early childhood?
Just because it's so unique, it's really doesn't, they're on a different, they have different time requirements, different requirements for age levels.
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement, you know, we have kids that are identified that need to be serviced.
Needs portion.
Yeah, we have kids identified that need to be serviced and we have a a model where we have kids that are, I guess, what they call typical education kids would come in and be with those kids that need additional services. So looking at that right now, we probably could service more kids in a traditional option for parents to come in and do it, but we don't have the space. So we could have more traditional kids attend preschool at Lakota, but we just don't have the space right now. So that was.
Tuition based preschool.
And so would we, it would be just one building?
Yes.
For the whole district?
For the whole district. For pre K. You know, that would be able to service all the students that have been identified plus your traditional to have that mix of.
It would be nice to be able to have more tuition based.
Correct.
Come, I mean, when my kids were, I know it's been a long time, but when they were tried to get into preschool, I think they were 180 and 220 on the waiting list or something because you still have to have, you know, the mix, your blend of classes, six typical and six.
And we provide transportation for special needs, but we do not provide transportation for tuition base for pre K, right?
Correct. And all the special needs are identified as transportation as part of their IEP. So.
I think option four is a can you explain more of the option for that pre K to three in one building?
So what we look at here is for option four, it really should be K three. So basically we'll look at our great configuration buildings now. Instead of K two buildings, it would be K three buildings. So you would have multiple K three buildings to support kids in grades K through third grade instead of K through second grade as we have right now. Right now we have K through two, so we are proposing an option four that you reconfigure your buildings that have K through three. So they would be in the building a little bit longer in that format. And that probably goes to third grade reading guarantee in the curriculum and. Right, so it provides that continuity of services through throughout to make sure that we can meet that third grade guarantee to have the third graders in the same grade as first and second. That foundational learning is done at that time. So also an option. Or we looked at a great creation of four or five. Then we looked at a great configuration of six, seven, eight, which is more of a middle school concept where we've talked about, you know, sixth graders now, there's almost, they're, for lack of a better term, in Lolloland where they're not quite elementary kids anymore. You know, the kids on the block, but you know, but their curriculum and what they're doing is more of a middle school, junior high type of feel. So they're a little bit more mature. So, and I know we've looked a lot at middle school. I know principals have gone to the middle schools at work conferences and stuff like that to look at that middle school concept. So that option sort of boiled up is that in nine, twelve, if you look at all three, the preferred options, a nine, twelve was the one that stood out the most looking at trying to get freshmen integrated into a main campus and get rid of the standalone ninth grade buildings. So and just to touch on option five, pre K five, again, looking at that just keeps the students in the building a little bit longer. So you're there from, I'm sorry, K five, kindergarten through fifth grade, all in one building. So you would have that set up, then a true middle school concept and a high school. So you would have an elementary school, which is kindergarten through fifth grade, a middle school and a high school. Is that configuration? Are there any?
Who did this, this scoring here, this scoring right here?
The scoring, well, the committee at the time, we looked at it, just trying to give our best guess and Jim can help talk to this as well. When we talked about looking at the different configurations, we want to try to put some kind of quantitative analysis to it and not just have it be subjective saying, hey, we like this better. So we looked at the criteria on your left here of the different things that would be important. As we looked at the grade options, it's worth scaled it, would it be an ideal situation? Would it be neutral where it could be either way or ideal? So based on the discussions that we had in our groups, we sort of graded which grade configuration matched against the evaluation criteria and how that would be weighed out. So when you add it up, you sort of get a total score about what would be the most optimal or ideal type of situation. Did I get that right, Jim?
Looking at the criteria for scoring here, I didn't see one, I think, important category, safety. Am I? Probably some, it's not there, safety.
Does that mean we're making an assumption?
Categories that should have been very, very important to safety.
Yeah, safety to me, I think would, I don't know, you can talk through it if there's any ideal or any benefits from a safety perspective from these grade configurations. And safety is always a top consideration for every building, every grade level. So I don't know, singled out, but can't have the conversation if we think one building layout is more likely to be safer than another.
I think it'd be good to address, even if it turns out that we're considering that neutral across the board, I think it'd be good to have the discussion.
Now, out of those three, is there a perception or an idea that one grade configuration versus another would be more ideal than the other from a safety perspective?
I think so. Because I believe that if, if we have more in one place and there is an incident, it's going to be more devastating than when.
Well, if you can look at it from this perspective, when we look at safety now and you're looking at when we do drills and we do safety things, early childhood schools, it's a lot harder to manage a safety drill with your first and second graders by themselves, kindergarten, first, second grade, you know, having the littles, there's a lot more adult supervision. There's not a fifth grader, sixth grader in the same building that sort of can take that lead and be that big brother or sister type of mentor to those kids. So from that perspective, from a safety, I know we struggle from that because we're really adult heavy and we should be adult heavy with that at the early childhood schools because we don't have opportunities to help or have older kids there to help provide that guiding influence on those kids. So from a safety perspective, you know, that's where we struggle there probably the most is making sure from accountability and, and help standpoint. Because you know, you tell a sixth grader, here's what you need to do, most of them get it and go barricade a door, do different things, whatever we do in the safety drill. You know, early childhood student, you don't have that as much. So.
So Chris, even if it's not, even if you don't feel that it's something that has to be addressed as we're looking at configurations, it seems it would still need to be addressed in the emergency plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All of our pre K and one building.
Together.
Right, right. And that would be something, if you had a standalone pre K by itself, that would, you'd have to really look at that as well.
Your safety plan would be different than.
Some of the schools that are smaller that have a K 12, you might have a safety issue with kindergartners and seniors being together. Things like that. So we don't have that personally.
Right.
We do happen to have a safety committee meeting this Friday.
Yeah.
You know, and.
And we planned it that way.
And over the years at Lakota two, just because we've looked at, we've had various grade level configurations throughout the history of Lakota two. You know, we've had K through sixth grade in the building all the time. We've had sixth graders in some buildings be found out to be a six, seven, eight building. Yeah, I think we've had even eighth and ninth, maybe at one time, maybe for a year transition. It's been a whole lot of different options that have been.
The growth that we've had.
Yeah. From an architectural standpoint, have you seen like in designing buildings with this, the safety aspect? Has there been like a preference as it relates to grade configuration and, and safety that you've seen any kind of trends or?
I was actually been trying to think through that as you've been talking about it to think if I can come up with anything and I really can't. The only thing I can think of is possibly smaller buildings are possibly a little more safer than larger buildings just because the number of people coming and going and. So I mean, that's kind of the only thing I can come up with is maybe smaller schools are, could be potentially safer than, and I think Matt's point's correct too. The keeping the grade levels similar is probably maybe a little safer. Beyond that, I, I can't come up with anything.
Yeah, if, if that, if that is considered, because when we are looking at the options, I believe that safety is very, very critical to these options. But it's not being considered here.
Yeah, we can add that as part of the matrix criteria for sure.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Now, and if there's any other criteria that we should look at, I think that's great. These are there again, these are just a list that we had come up with when we went through the committee meetings. But I think safety is a great, great thought. We didn't, in time, we didn't look at that. So.
Yeah, there are.
Criteria let us know.
Yeah, there's other things that you want us to add to this matrix. We'd be glad to do that.
Well, let me ask just to throw it out if I can, Chris, what the board is thinking in terms of just those three options? Are there other options that we'd like to see included as we're having this discussion?
Or if you want to eliminate one.
Either way.
Yeah, I don't want to narrow it too far, but.
And since we get into the options, it's to be, to run the same page. We focus on the three, the option three, four and five, and the options we're going to discuss today were the primary focus for any options that we considered. We do have an option in there that looks at where we are currently right now as, as a district. But everything that we considered to be different than where we are right now was based on option three, four or five. So.
I guess, and I understand that it was a previous board, so I want to be sure that this board has the opportunity to weigh in as well. Go ahead, Jimmy.
I believe you just mentioned that you're planning on kind of comparing it to where we are now because I thought about that. If we just look at these options and we don't look at current, then we don't have that basis of comparison just to basically understand why we might move to a new configuration. Because we know change is always hard.
That was brought up, I think Glenn brought that up in one of our meetings that we went back and created the option F and F one, I think it is, we looked at what would that look like because we need some kind of baseline.
Right. And that's what the current one is though, correct?
Yeah, that is our current option. Yes, we do, we will go through our actual options in a minute. We do have one that's based on our current configuration.
Oh, okay.
The other ones are based on options three, four or five.
Okay.
Because we didn't do one on, like option one that we did not consider, really the only thing that we would change is a nine, 12 high school. But everything else would stay the same, pre K two, three, six, seven, eight, and we went to nine, 12.
That's a pretty significant change.
It is. Option two, we didn't consider because it led to more transitions for students.
Families.
And families, not from six or seven, we just didn't like the super large.
Mega building.
Mega buildings. So.
That would be a safety issue. That's why safety issue can be critical. Yeah.
So things sort of migrated to three, four and five as my discussions went along. If you have any additional criteria you want us to consider, if something pops up in your mind later today or your, going through your week, just let us know. We'll add that to the matrix and take a look. But if there's any other discussion about this or we can go through some of the options.
We want to walk through the options first and then come back with questions.
So you should have what's called scope area four.
Do you have a question?
No, I'll go.
Scope area four and behind that, scope area four, this is basically a write-up of all the different options so you can go through and read it. Have an idea of what's being done. And for each option, we also have a large handout. Gives you a visual about what the options look like and when the buildings, what buildings are decommissioned, what buildings are added. And on the back of it, you have a map as well. When we went through this, we also had a financial component that was evaluated through the OCC. We had them cost out each option as a matter of prudence and looking at all the options. And based on what the OCC could do, we did not send every single option to them to price out. So option A, we did not send them the price out because it wasn't one of our primary options. We thought there are other options that would be better to be considered to be priced. But if we go through this option today and the board really likes, hey, we really should look at this as a serious option. We can go back and look at having this fully priced out. So.
Chris, how are these, the options one through seven?
I was just going to say that we put the letter S. On the big sheet, they're one, two, three and four, and on this sheet, they're A, B and C, D.
Right.
We can catch on, you just have to decode.
So is that how it is, is one A and two B?
Yeah, options are A, B, C, D, E, F. And they have no direct option to the great configuration itself.
They don't.
So at the top of each option, you'll see which grade configuration is configured here. So I can go through and look at it. So we look at option A, A, five, six, eight, nine, 12. Yeah, yeah, five.
Yep.
So option A would be grade configuration, option five.
Thank you.
We can write that at the top of each.
Trying to make sure we're awake.
And it says currently not recommended for consideration, but as I'm looking at my chart from last time we met, we originally just said three and four. But today you're saying three, four and five. So we've added, which is now five is A. So I looked at from the notes from the last time we were discussing all of this, at that point, the only two that were recommended were options three and four. At least that's what I have in my notes, but it now sounds like we've added option five from what you said earlier.
Correct.
So here it says option A, which is really also option five. Not recommended, but it really is now recommended as my understanding.
Option A has the grade configuration of option five. That's the only thing that it relates to. Option five here is just a great configuration. So option A says.
Oh, so this is just the, okay.
Option A is a standalone option. It's everything in totality, but you link it back up to your grade configuration, that would be your option five for grade configuration.
Gotcha. Wait, we're going to have multiple options under the same grade configuration. Okay, now I'm following you.
Just to clarify a little bit, this grade option configuration, this was a meeting that was done probably three or four months before options were even developed. So the reality is this was just a document strictly studying the, the grade configurations. Thus the layering, so they don't really correspond to the master plans that were developed three or four months down the road.
Got it.
This was kind of a separate meeting, separate document. So that is Chris saying they really don't correlate with each other.
All right. And so several of these are going to have the same grade configuration options.
Correct.
Correct. So we'll go through one of these charts. Is that? Yeah. A lot of people.
A lot.
You got it.
So we'll start out with option A. We don't spend much time on it because we don't have a cost analysis on it. But we'll sort of, all, all the options are sort of run the same way as far as how these sheets are configured right here. So if you look at it, you see some notes at the top, basically says 10 schools decommissioned. So that means we're going to do away with 10 of our current schools. We build two new schools and do 14 additions on the schools that remain. So when we looked at this, so if you look at the 1920, the very top line, look at all the buildings and what they would be K through five. So like your Ryan Dots, your Shines, your Heritages and all the buildings that are currently in ECF or elementary would be converted to a K through five building. That's what you're looking at on the top line. And if you look at the six through eight grade band, all of the junior schools would convert to a middle school, be six, eight. But you would also add West freshman and East freshman as middle schools as well.
Not the current West freshman, would we?
The current West freshman.
Current West freshman?
In this, in this model.
Let's hear him out, guys.
Then grades nine through 12, we would look at the two high schools. So this is just a, an example of what it could be, right, Jim? Sort of takes our existing buildings and say, if we use our existing buildings, what would it look like with our existing buildings?
Using your existing buildings, how could you get to this new grade configuration and what would that look like? And so you can see like on the high schools, you know, basically you're about 896 students short in this configuration.
So there'd be additions to the high schools?
Well, that's coming in the next, and Crystal will talk about that.
Right. So basically the top line for each one of these is sort of a baseline. If we use our current buildings, did what we did, it shows we're 896 students short from a capacity at our current high schools. We have excess capacity at our middle schools and we're okay with capacity at our K five buildings. But that's how that works from a capacity issue.
I think another thing, just to understand these things is really the top line is basically year one or current conditions. The second line down is kind of five years out. And then the final line at the bottom is basically a 10 year out. So it's showing a transition from kind of where you're at now and that grade configuration. And how can you get to fulfill all your buildings and meet the enrollment projections in year 10 is really the way these things are kind of laid out so you can understand them.
Right. And neither just. Yeah, phase one, phase two, these are just ideas, concepts. It doesn't seem to have to be done this way for a final plan. We needed to start somewhere to say, okay, what could this really look like? So if you look at the middle column or the middle section, we eliminate Creekside, Hopewell and Adena. We decommission those buildings. We would add a new K five building and do additions at the other building, remaining buildings identified there to account for the capacity of all the students in grades K through five. Then you look at the middle schools, you eliminate Hopewell Junior, Liberty Junior and West Freshmen. You would use Plains, East Freshman Bridge, you would add a new middle school to replace the three that you eliminated. You add two additions at your high schools. That makes sense?
It's Mina, Mina be a question you can answer. 10 schools decommissioned to new, 14 additions is.
It's Mina, Mina be a question you can answer. Ten schools decommissioned to move fourteen additions is, is a lot. Would we even need to buy land for any of those?
There'd be additions on your current facilities.
Including the land then, no addition of land needed.
No addition of land needed, no, but you do additions to your current facilities. That's why, um, we went through these options. We said. You know, we did it on paper. Doing fourteen additions is very disruptive. To schools because you have to do them, you can't do them all during the summer to be done throughout the school year. And we just thought option A wasn't a very practical option to move through with. That's why we didn't get it priced out. From our perspective, but again, as we go through it here, you think it has validity and we want to price it out. If you like this option. And we, we could do that option.
When you talk about fourteen additions, you're talking about additions to current buildings, not fourteen additional.
Right. And if you look at the buildings here, like we do an addition at Wyandotte, Cherokee, Endeavor, Independence, Dean, Ben Gordon. Within the first five years of the plan. The second five years of the plan. They would all have additions and we'd have a new K five building to replace Adena, Hopewell, Creekside. So. Redistribute kids, reuse our buildings and do additions to accommodate the student enrollment.
This is. This is what correlates to option five on here, which I have to say for me personally is, is attractive in many respects. When I look at. Uh, reducing the number of transitions for our students, that's been a problem as long as I've been in the district. And I, and I think an issue for families. I also think it creates greater transportation headaches for us. Having as many different grade levels as we do. Plus, by whatever rubric you've used here, that. Is one of the highest scores on here. So I personally would like to see that priced out. I get what you're saying about the disruption and you have to take that into account. I'd like to see it priced out.
But there's other options that have option five.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
So, so we'll get through those two. As we get through all of them, come back and say, hey, you know, I like that grade level configuration and option C. Better than the option A. And that's what we did. That's why we didn't.
So there'll be multiple.
Yes, yes. So we'll go on to the next one. Let's go on to option B.
There's two more. Two more versions for five, that great configuration, but the different option of transition.
Two more of those. So will you still, if you like that great configuration, there's still two options for that. We can, I got it, but thank you.
So we look at option B, it has the same great configuration that you like. As the pre, uh, the pre-K, the K five, six, eight and nine, twelve option. So it has the same exact option that you like as far as transitions. We took a different approach and how we would get there. So on this one, we did have priced out by, um, the OCC and that's on the very front. It says. If you look at the proposed total cost of three sixty-nine, one sixty. Option B.
Bigger sheet.
You know, honestly gentlemen, this might have been easier to put up on a screen where we're all looking at the same sheets, just for next time when we, when we talk about it, but, okay.
So option B, if you look at the, the cost sheet here. Look at the cost sheet here, it gives you the proposed cost for the total master plan. And from that point on, we broke it down in different phases because you're never going to do everything all at once. So for this one, the entire cost of the master plan was three hundred and sixty-nine million dollars. So with that, um, you got to remember, we look at the OCC, they want you to bring all your schools up to current. Standards as far as the design manual. So that's why we looked at phase one and two are really. What you do for a new construction and try to get your great configurations to what you want to do. And future is what you would do to your current facilities at some point to bring them up to current design school manual. So if you look at that, there's a hundred and seventeen million in the future that you may never ever get to. So when you're looking at the total cost, you really need to focus on phase one and phase two. That would be your actual. Cost now to, to do this plan.
Yeah, it's basically over a ten-year period of, of time.
Age one and two would be over ten years?
Well, the, the plan, it, if I'm looking at it, when we would start it and then when it would be completed. For the entire plan, you're looking at at least ten years to get there.
Just so you understand why the ten years was selected to, there's enrollment projections were done and they were done for ten years out. And so that's kind of why we were trying to hit. Fill all the seats in the schools and meet the enrollment projections in that ten-year period. We didn't have numbers passed there to know really where it was going. So. That's why these are kind of based on a ten-year plan.
So aren't we currently above our, our enrollment projections though that we're on that ten-year demographic study? So did we take that into consideration when we were building out into the ten-year future?
Yeah, we would have to look at. Closer, if we get close to finalizing, uh, an option, we'd have to have an updated enrollment forecast to do that. So option B, um, really it's the same kind of concept. We have an option A, but we do a little bit of different approach. This, we decommissioned the ten buildings and, and for this, the ten buildings that we decommissioned are all the same buildings. They are the ones that have been identified by the OCC that are more cost prohibitive to renovate than we are to rebuild. So those, when we see the schools decommissioned. For every, for every option that we consider, it will be the same ten schools. So those ten schools would be Creekside, Freedom, Adena. West freshman, Johnny, Heritage, Woodland, Hopewell, ECS, Hopeful Junior. And Liberty Junior. So just, that, that would be the constant that you see in each example, that those are the ten that have been deemed to be more. Cost beneficial to rebuild and to renovate according to the OCC.
Again, it's six new schools as opposed to the first option A, which is two new schools.
The real difference between.
The lack of.
First one and the second one is. This one has no additions on it. So the, the additional students are picked up in new buildings in lieu of building and adding. Adding on to your existing buildings. There again, probably cleaner way to do it because you're not disrupting. All your schools with that construction and, and all that kind of stuff that goes on with construction. But there again, just another way to look at it. So the first one was lots and lots of additions and a couple of new buildings. This one's enabling all the growth. And just new buildings only. That's kind of the difference in these two, in these two options.
And in option A, did, I don't want to have to go backwards, but i- is it two additions to the high schools? In the second part and then two more additions to the high school? Are there additions twice to the high school in that plan?
That, that is correct, yes.
That's okay. So that's two additions in the middle and then two additions in the third. So we're adding additions to the high school twice.
Why would you just not add all that addition at once?
We're, again, we're looking at the enrollment, when the enrollment comes, so we're building in time to meet that enrollment. So there's, and again, that's just the way we planned it out. Doesn't mean that could be the reality of it. It could be we built it all at one time. But just for planning purposes and looking at, trying to compare the enrollment balance, the enrollment growth compared to what you would need from a facility standpoint. Just trying to space it out over that ten-year period is why we did that. From practical standpoint, it may not, it may not make sense to do that. It may be, makes sense to do it. All at once and build it all. So it's ready to go instead of having construction now, then again, five years from now.
And again, one of the things to sort of point out the obvious, I think that's sometimes what we have to do is when you look at the decommissioned buildings. I mean, in my mind, you're looking at campuses, right? Not just standalone buildings. So. We're looking at West Freshman Creekside, you're looking at even Hopewell, as you could say, even though they're split by the church, um, pretty much the same footprint. And then, um, Liberty Junior and Woodland. So, you know, it says ten and it is ten, but. I know that campuses that kind of encompasses more things.
One other thing I'll point out here just real quick is that another major difference between A and B courses is. In the high schools, there again, like you were pointing out, they're showing two additions on the high schools. This one's actually showing a new type, some kind of a high school type building. There again, instead of the additions.
And it says new look kind of land, is that what it's referring to?
Yes.
Yeah. And really we looked at, there's a model up in Dublin, probably Emerald Campus. Where they have three high schools now and they didn't want to build a fourth high school. So what they did is they, um, actually they found an old office building.
Horizon.
Uh, that Verizon, they bought from them and they renovated that space. To house a lot of their shared type of, um, things like your Butler Tech classes perhaps, or. Other things that would, would come in and students from all three high schools would shuttle throughout today, throughout the day to take classes at this, uh, Emerald Campus.
And, yeah, if I can, just way, way down the road, I mean, it could house our cyber programs for the district. So we wouldn't have. East and West Cyber, we just have a location, computer science tied to our business community. It could be something like that. Similar to what Chris is talking about, Emerald Campus that we visited two years ago by now.
But really, um, the building could be whatever we want it to be, but basically it's a way to try to accommodate a nine, twelve. Uh, high school with some creativity about not having all nine, twelve kids in the building at the same time. So if you had all, all ninth graders in the, in the main campuses, you don't have the physical space to do it. So how can you get kids in a nine, twelve environment without, um, doing additions to the high school? And this was a. Way that Dublin looked at it, so we thought we'll look at it as well. Um, so it could be a broad thing, like Matt said, you can look at a bunch of different things. Even current programs, like if you look at the opportunity kids have at East with the Spark. We held the Spark year in the shared building, less kids could come and take Spark class there too. So. You think about it from a broad perspective, it provides opportunities for all high school kids across the district to come to one place to get. Specialty classes or, or unique opportunities that may not be offered. You don't have to duplicate that. Thing as well. It may not have a full number of kids at East that want this class, but East and West, yes. So you just hire the one teacher and not duplicate resources at each one.
But I don't want to get too specific, but I just want to give an example. When we talked about how we saw the other district up in the Columbus area do it, they actually run shuttle buses continually. From their main campus to their Emerald Center. So again, not saying we're going to do that, but it's something that we thought might fit us down the road if we do it.
There's still a lot of discussion where that would be, how that would be set up, but that's just. For this exercise of looking at options, that was a consideration that we thought could be. A unique way to accommodate a nine through twelve, which people thought would be the best.
How much cost is there to that particular piece?
To look at this, so if you look at an option B, um, if you look at the first phases to build the buildings, get the, the things. Are you looking at two hundred and fifty-one million dollars for phase one and phase two?
I'm sorry, I specifically meant the Emerald. Building option.
We haven't gotten that detail to look at that yet.
It's in, it's not in phase one on this cost and option B?
It is.
Yeah.
About seventy-six million dollars for it. For the size of the building, you would need to accommodate the additional students that you need in the high school. They base, the OCC basically takes the number of students that would be in that building and multiplies it by. The cost for a new high school is three hundred and some dollars a square foot now. So. It's a simple math formulas that they use to, to come up with these numbers.
That may or may not be our reality. You know, I'm sure when, um, Dublin did that. You know, they, they found the unique way to use an existing space, at least it, buy it, whatever, that met their needs. So it doesn't mean that. It would cost us seventy-six million dollars to do this option, but replace holder to look at it just based on a strictly math equation.
But, but you'd also have to look at that seventy-six million dollars versus how much does it cost to put the additions on the building?
Absolutely.
So.
Twice.
Right.
From Dublin's perspective, how much did it cost to build a fourth high school? You need your athletic facilities and everything. For them, it was a. You know, a new high school's well over a hundred million dollars.
Absolutely, at least size, yeah.
Yeah.
Of course, aren't you saving in operating costs by decommissioning some of these buildings and then doing something like that? Like you said, it's not, it's going to add less. In an operational perspective.
Right. And that's part of the deeper dive too, that we'll have to look at in future meetings as well. If we take buildings offline, how does that impact our capital? And how does it impact our operations? We have ten less buildings that are going to need roofs, parking lots, HVAC systems. You know, we can look at, you know, still have the same number of students. There may be some savings in staff or support staff or stuff like that, but. You have the same number of students.
So I think all of those reasons, what you just said, and the fact that it's really hard to compare option A to option B without. Cost. Cost list. I would really like to see that. This feels very incomplete to me to make a comparison. And I really like the thought on, on a, not that we're all. Going into our thoughts, but I do think decommissioning and reducing the number of campuses and facilities makes good sense for us. So.
We thought that too. That's why option A didn't really do that for us.
You're still bringing us other options with three and four, correct?
Okay.
There's still one more option with this great configuration, right? All right.
So I can see again, it's the same great configuration, but. Fewer transitions, the K five, six, eight, nine, twelve. But this option that decommissions ten buildings, the same ten buildings, but you only build three new buildings. And the way you do that is really thinking outside of your norm and looking at your current high schools. What they could be and converting your current high schools into your middle schools. There's enough capacity at your current high school to house grade six, seven and eight, because you already housed ten, eleven, twelve. So if you look at on that, they would build two new high schools that accommodate nine through twelve and one new K five school. So you would decommission ten buildings, bring back three new ones and repurpose your, your high schools as middle schools.
So you would have one East Peter Middle School and one West Peter Middle School.
Correct. And then you would build one new K five, so like. You would, you would repurpose like Ridge, repurpose East Freshman, it would become K five buildings. And you have to build one new K five to accommodate for the growth, but then you get rid of the rest of the, uh, the ten buildings. So this one was. Look at, and if you look at just. Do that, you're two hundred and fifty-seven million dollars for the two new high schools plus your K five building.
Okay, when you talk about this, Chris, and you talk about building two new high schools. And we're not buying land.
We have plenty of land. If you look at, like Matt said, we have a bunch of campuses. So if you look at the Creekside.
So you could potentially decommission the building, demolish it and build on that. Okay.
Yeah, we'd have to work through all the logistics. How you, how you go through that. It's a big legit, it'll be a big logistical.
Sure.
Transition.
It is.
You have to figure that out, but we do have the land, you know, between. Creekside and West Freshman has a lot of land there. Hopewells have a lot of land there.
Behind it.
If you look at, even if you look at, um, Liberty, Woodland and the Service Center, all that area right there is all of our land. You know, no one says the Service Center, I should say there.
We just purchased ten acres by central office.
Right.
Right. We have all this, yeah, everything behind planes here. So we have plenty of land. Consider and look at what that happens to.
When you're looking at current.
Right. Wouldn't have to acquire new land, I don't think.
That's huge.
Right. So if you don't have any land acquisition cost, that helps you out. What's that?
I said land is what's going to cost you if you have to buy land. Right.
So this one really, um. You know.
I have not heard that.
That option C for Chris.
Any questions on option C?
He's more complex.
So we'll go on then to, uh, option D real quick. Again, we did not have this one priced out just due to the fact that. Capacity, the OCC to press out everything that we wanted to do, but again, if there's, we, we can get general idea, ballpark won't be. From the OCC, we can probably figure it out on our own what the, the cost would be. But option, um, D. the cost would be. But option um D really looks at your grade configuration, option three. Now we're on to a different configuration for grades.
You did not cross this one up?
Not this one, no.
And this would be grade configuration three?
Option three, yes, it'd be.
Or option, yeah.
Yep.
Integration, which is seven, eight, nine, twelve. Okay.
Yeah.
Again, um the good things about this grade level configuration, again, you get the K three, which is um, we talked about with the students being there for the third grade reading guarantee, being in the same building. Four, six, um, you don't quite get that middle school. You keep your elementary school, they have a junior high still. But here you still would eliminate your your freshman campus standalone. So you basically have one less transition than you have right now.
And one more than in grade configuration five, is that correct?
One, one more transition.
One more transition here, yeah.
Right. You have one less than currently and one more than option five.
Yeah, the big thing that happens here is East Fresh, the current East Freshman School becomes basically another high school. That's that's really the big move on this on this option.
It was built with that in mind at the time.
So that could be your, we don't have a good name for it, so we'll call it the code of land, but that could be your set of building and new building to do that, you convert that East Freshman into your code of land, but you still have to add to it to make sure it met the capacity for that.
And why did you not cross this?
You should have crossed this one, because this is, this is.
Very similar to it.
E?
E, yeah.
This make more sense.
Why do we not do that, remember Jim?
No, no cost on E, I swear.
Because E one, we had, we liked that one better too.
Is E one cost for option E?
No, E one is slightly different. Um.
We don't have a cost for E?
We have a cost for D or E, so we can get those.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have everything.
Okay. What is the difference between E and B?
Uh, difference between, well, actually, D, you reused uh East Freshman Building as your third high school. And D or E, you build your new high school. You'd use your freshman building as a seven, eight building instead.
Okay, see that.
Options D, E, and E one all had the same grade configuration. So it's all the K three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, twelve. Option E, you had less um you had fewer new buildings, you had one new seven building instead of eight. You build additions instead.
So E, you have eight buildings, ten decommissioned, but you have to do, that's the third high school, right?
Yeah, so the difference between E and E one, instead of doing that third high school, you just added additions on to each high school instead of building the third one.
And you only.
So E one, you don't, you have your local code of land, just add to your current high schools to get your nine, twelve capacity at your current high schools. You still build seven new buildings. You you decommission the ten, but you build back several new K three buildings, new four, six buildings, and um one new seven, eight building. So I'm here, you want cost analysis for each option that we didn't get a cost for, correct? So option F and F one sort of similar. Option F is really looking at keeping what we have now and doing nothing but adding um additions to twenty-one schools to account for the increase in them. Basically, you keep every building you have. You add additions where you think you needed to accommodate for enrollment. But that's sort of your baseline. If you did nothing but accommodate for enrollment growth, this would be option F.
And that keeps the grade configuration the way it is.
Exactly the same grade configuration. We keep our our K two, three, six, seven, eight, our standalone nine buildings and our ten, twelve buildings. So just looking at enrollment over the next ten years, we would have to add additions to accommodate for that growth, what we would do. So it'd be twenty-one additions that we need to complete it over the next ten years to accommodate for student growth.
And not all of that would be how do I want to say this? The OFCC would not want to partner with us and share the cost of all of that because we would be putting money into buildings that does not meet their
Quote.
requirements. So so the other part about, as we're talking about projecting these costs, the other thing that we need to look at is what part of that would we have to go alone on and eat a hundred percent of versus the state would share in that cost for us as well.
Correct.
And that one would be the the least partnership, I would think.
Right. There'll be, I'm more locally funded initiatives for this one than any other.
Yeah.
There might be some out there, but I want to gather a holdout. But and and part of that too is, you know, I don't want to get too, too deep into the financials because we need a much broader discussion about financials. Talk about the options and you know, really looking at if we decommission, what does that mean from an operational standpoint? Um, what does that mean um from uh, you know, looking at costs and current mileage and where we are right now? So that's a much broader discussion. I don't want to get into tonight, but we will, we will, we'll have that discussion for sure. Um, so the last option we have here really is option F. And F one, I'm sorry, it's really looking at, it's almost a status quo, but looking at are the buildings that we all would have agreed upon a sort of a worst, a worst case scenario building. So basically, we keep all of our buildings, we do additions, but we get rid of our, of buildings that are considered the most aged. So that would reduce West Freshman, Hopewell Junior, Hopewell ECS, Creekside. So it isn't a full um F where you just add on, but it's really looking at, is it worth putting, is it worth putting more money into a West Freshman building that's already aged out, a Hopewell Junior that's aged out? So this is to the group at the time. So this is probably a more practical, if you like, you want a status quo, but update your facilities to be a level more practical, I thought F one would be a good consideration from that perspective. If you didn't do, want to do anything with a grade configuration, keep them as they are.
But the cost aren't any lower.
Of course, yeah.
What's that?
The costs are definitely not any lower than the other plans.
No, they are not.
And I I would have a question, Chris. We've encountered this before when we were looking what to do with the old Union Elementary. What's the cost of rehabilitation versus the cost of of a completely new building and how do those compare? And I guess I would have that question about the buildings that you're not decommissioning on this one. What are we putting into those buildings compared to what's the rehab versus the new construction?
Right.
So when we come back to have that finance discussion, I would like to see that.
Yeah, and and we could definitely talk through that. And if we decide to go that route to you know, if we do decide to go with the OTC and partner with them to get the the cost share, you know, part of the plan may not be cost share. If you want to um rehab um Heritage or Woodland and put that money into it, they may say, that's fine, you can do that, but that's all locally funded. So we'll help you with your four new buildings, maybe a couple additions at the ones, but your ones that we don't think are pretty well spent. You guys can spend that money, but
I think we should see those numbers to have a clearer understanding of that.
Yeah.
Just just so you know, on this this is in your packet too, this sheet that says uh building statistics, and it does have the cost to renovate the building and the cost to rebuild the cost.
That's in here.
That's all, yeah, that's in there and it's in. Yeah, it's in your phase one or whatever it is that Chris had, but you do have those numbers already that you can compare those and see, see those costs. I I will, I just want to stress, the numbers that you're seeing here, these these numbers change daily. It's it's amazing how all these numbers change. Um, right now, we're working on uh twenty twenty cost sets, the numbers from the OFCC. There again, costs are going up every day. So the new cost sets, you know, the numbers that you're looking at here, if they redo these master plans, these numbers are going to go up, up. I mean, that's just the way it is. So just be aware that these numbers are not, right now are not set in stone. They will change. At some point, you lock them in, but um these are really meant to be kind of a mile high look at cost and that kind of thing.
I think the one thing you will see as you go through all of them, the the costs are relatively the same area. There's not wide range of of dollars. So whichever options, even if the ones we cost out are going to be very similar to the ones that are here already. I think at some point, we would like the committee to look at, you know, we prefer options, whatever, 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 and really start taking a deeper dive into those, getting better costs. And the ones that you think make the most sense. There's options in here that you think, well, it's nice, but it doesn't make any sense for us long term. It makes our work a little bit easier to look at.
Take it off the table.
Take it off the table and do a deeper dive into the ones that you think are really worthwhile for this committee to dive into and really for the thorough analysis from here.
We, do we almost have to, and I'm asking the question, I'm not saying I wouldn't do this. We almost have to figure out what grade configuration we think is what we want, correct? I mean, we, to to me, if we're looking at F and F one, which is our current grade configuration, and we've pretty much all said we don't like that many transitions.
Then.
And those are out.
Yeah. I mean, I almost feel like we have to figure out the grade configuration that you're or one or two grade configurations.
I agree. Um.
I I personally still like though F one and F, one of the Fs, just so we have, this is what status quo looks like relative to making a change, just so we have a baseline. So that's where I think it's valuable, even though that may not be where we, that's highly unlikely to be where we end up. Just so you can see where that is relative to your baseline, in my opinion.
In a way, I think there's something to that, especially because I think something here from our community is make do with what you have. And to take what you have and and change that, but not necessarily a lot of new buildings. I think there'll be a significant part of our community that is interested in seeing what that looks like. So I would agree with Julie that I think we need to keep something that says, here's the status quo. I am, I have to be totally honest, I'm shocked at the cost on the Fs that if we're keeping the same buildings and doing rehab or renovation, that they're the price that they are. So.
And the disruption, the disruption too.
I do understand the disruption and and that is a factor in in my thinking. I'm sure it is for everybody, but it's not the only factor.
Sure, no. But also um give you something else to think about too. Um, aside from all this, not so much our dollars or or the grade levels, but what partnerships could we do? Um, if we did something, we were talking like the computer science slash cybersecurity hub, could that be with a business partner?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Private funding is very.
Yeah, I think that would be awesome. And then think of something like this, what if we did do the pre-K, but part of it also involved a community center that could maybe help with our lack of a senior citizen center in this area? And is that a partnership that we could set up for our seniors and for, you know, our district and community too? So sort of outside the box thinking if we're going through this. I think it's something for us to to consider.
A lot of outside the box thinking.
Right. I mean, we use Dublin as an example tonight, but doesn't mean we follow that model. We maybe blaze our own trail. And so what are the partnerships and what do we need for our kids and what would the community benefit from?
Going through this, just um looking at the how it laid out with the various options, um option four never boiled up to something that we we looked at as far as so I don't know if that's something that it it turned out option three and five were the ones that sort of boiled up to the top. But I don't know if that's what the current board feels like should be the focus, or should we consider some other configurations using option with the uh.
Is for the pre-K three or kindergarten three?
Yep.
The only difference between three and four is that sixth grade goes up and is with seventh and eighth.
Yes.
Sixth grade staying.
Which make most, which make more sense on option five.
Three is a junior high model, often three is a middle, or often four is a middle school model.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of the middle school option. But that's just me.
Which is the option five?
Six, seven, eight.
It's option four in here.
Option four, five are the middle school option.
Okay.
Option three is like a junior high option, seventh and eighth grade together.
I had a student who was one of the classes, my daughter was one of the classes that went to sixth grade at Liberty Junior because Independence was overcrowded. It was two years. It was the graduating class of fourteen, thirteen, or twelve and thirteen. And I will say that when they told me she was going to go to the junior high, I was like, no.
She didn't like it.
And then when she went, I firmly believe sixth graders belong in that middle school. She, they're just, it's a maturity thing and it it helped her be mature. It helped her. It helped her, you know, you like whoever said that sixth grade is such an awkward is a really old for middle school or for elementary, but you know, do they belong in the, you know, in a middle school option? And I do, it really helped her grow up and organization and, you know, responsibility. The only downside for her was that it was the last class that did that. Only two classes did it. So for two years in a row, she was the youngest class in the building. That wasn't so fun, but I I I, like I said, I was not a fan of it when they told me it was happening and it turned out to be the best thing. And I've heard that from other parents that were in that situation. That's just mine.
You have here child development stages, pre-K through two and then three through six. So what, how are those benchmarked? Is that just a standard? Or?
So the K three makes, I think, a little bit of sense because of the third grade reading guarantee and the literacy piece that's important at lower grade levels. Is that what you're asking? I'm sorry.
In your matrix, you have child development stages and it shows pre-K two is one and then three, six is a band. So is that important to try to respect that?
I I think it's part of it. I just think it's one, one factor to it. I still, I mean, when Chris was talking about his plan, I still like the K three together, I think. Just because of that early literacy piece. I don't, I don't know how we or why we came up with that per se.
And so five is the least amount of transitions, correct?
It is. That's the one I like.
And out of all of those academic achievement, according to this is the highest on five. Can you explain, anybody explain that? Academic achievement is ideal on the option five. I'm going back to this list because it's really this is the only format that we have that says the different factors that we need to be weighing as we're looking at these.
It, part of it was less transitions, part of the academic, because the kids are in the building longer, you get to build those relationships, you're in the in the building.
Academic support, the rest of it.
So um we thought, because they're in there and there's fewer transitions, that supported academic achievement as far as ability relationships, having a better knowledge of the students before. You you barely get to know some of them and they're gone to the next building. So from from our discussions at the time as a as a committee, we felt that that was more ideal from an academic achievement standpoint to be in the building along the time with fewer transitions. So because that had the fewest transitions, we graded that higher than the others.
There's also an opportunity in that five, the um, the pairing of the big and little.
Right.
You know, the sixth grade buddy when my daughter was in first, you know, my kids had sixth grade buddies when they were in first grade. So there's that opportunity for the the pairing of the the big and little and
Well, even the eighth grade is with the sixth.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess when I look at the options between option four and option five, I would lean five over four. So that's why I don't know that.
I don't know that I would need to pursue option four further, like they didn't do, because. To me, between four and five, it's one less transition, potentially more economies of scale. And you're still getting that middle school mo, I think you called it the middle school model with six through eight together. So I, I personally am okay with just three and five instead of four.
I'll look at academic achievement, like she said, on that five, option five. And um. Neighborhood identity. Scores high on number five. These are very important to.
Well, McConaughey really has been, I think, a neighborhood, a neighborhood school model. For a very long time, to the, to the most extent. I'm, I lean toward five as well for many reasons, um, that I see on the rubric.
Yeah.
I agree, I think middle school would be something worth exploring. I'd like to see some of the studies on that, academic achievement. And the number of transitions is very attractive to me.
That would be a, a big difference based on what we have now.
Huge difference, I think it would help with transportation and all kinds of different issues.
But if you looked at, up between options three and four, you, you prefer one over the other, would, want us to go back and price out? Some of the options with option four and move option three, or do you like the variations to look at for our community to consider?
I personally like the variations for the community to consider, because I think again, four and five are very similar and three gives us a little bit of a different look personally.
So do three, four and five?
No, I would just do three, five.
Three and five, yes.
But it does mean costing out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that three and five are the. Front runner, so to speak.
Which all these options are pretty much, so.
Yeah, that's kind of what we, the ones that are priced out, those are kind of three and five.
Right. And we'll look at options A, B and E. Placed out.
And F. Right, F.
No, he's got F one.
Oh, F one, okay, I didn't hear.
F is priced out as well.
Yeah, I didn't hear F one, one of the Fs is just what you need to, for comparison, you know.
Right.
I don't think so.
Just one of them.
But I also think there are a couple more things that we could put on here, because you're not really addressing. You do an operational cost, but I don't feel like we're really talking about the economy and scales if we went with this plan versus this plan. What does that look like with fewer campuses and that kind of thing? I'd like to understand that in this kind of a layout as well.
Right, yeah.
Where the, you mentioned operational costs, but it's really not spelled out very clearly to us here.
Yet, so.
Can you delve into that further for us?
Yeah, that's, that's part of our, we've had those conversations that we definitely need to look at. You know, when we look at the total cost, we need to look at not just the cost of this, but what's the overall cost from the organizational standpoint, from operations. Capital to whatever, so you just, I don't think we just can look at something in isolation and say, this plan costs X much to build. Three new buildings. When you look at, okay, we built three new buildings, we decommissioned ten buildings, what does that mean for us from. I mean, capital improvement, PIs perspective, what does it mean from a operational standpoint? Uh, and those things, so you can look at the full financial picture, not just a single cost.
I mean, a really big number off the top is energy costs of your utilities, when you decommission buildings and build new, more energy efficient. Buildings, I mean, that's, Jenny can tell you, that's millions of dollars a year, correct, and, and energy consumption?
Well, the, the eight, the consistently eight buildings that we're talking about taking offline or the ones that are needing the most repaired or capital improvement. We've got assessments that project out three and five and seven years of the things that are already needed. Whether it be parking lots, roofs, your HVAC and other needs of the building.
Can you talk into the mic, Chris? Because our meeting's being recorded. Correct, I'm sorry, Greg.
Yeah, the seven or eight buildings that we're consistently discussing are the ones that Chris and I worked together to have a capital plan on when it comes to those facility improvements, so. You know, we can send, look at the assessments we have and can sort of compare those numbers within the next eight to ten years. Uh, which is something we're doing anyway, because if we would take them offline, we still have to maintain them to get to that point. In that completion of a second phase, so those are items that he and I have talked about, how we can go above and beyond this operational labor. And so forth of supporting those buildings.
That makes sense, so let's say, let's say we use Willen, Willen's going to need a new roof for ten years, but if we're going to take it offline. As part of our plan, we'll keep that roof working over the next ten years, but we're not going to replace it and spend a million plus dollars, right? So those are the things that you guys would even know what's upcoming on these buildings, so you can say, if you take this offline. Here's the cost avoidance for any kind of permanent improvements that are slated. And happen, so that could be part of your decision-making process.
Yeah, just the assessment that Chris and I have been working and looking at our capital for this, uh, this coming new fiscal year. Has those three buildings alone, I mean, they are the same building, same year, same age, and you're looking at six to seven hundred thousand dollars just to get one section. Well, fifty percent of the building up to where it needs, you know, and we could look at a different type of per project. A different type of Band-Aid if we were looking at taking it offline, so that's where we're at.
So our next facilities meeting is the beginning of March, is that enough time to really flesh out these couple of areas we've decided to focus on?
So are there any options that you do not want to consider at all, or take off the table, or, or you want to bring them all, excuse me, all back again and. Do that.
I think I'd like to spend some more time studying this, this was a lot of material that we didn't have before to really walk through. Um, what does the rest of the board think?
Options within.
Do you want to take any of these out of the pile?
Great, yeah. Great configuration.
I mean, I think the ones you guys already brought forward as your recommendations, I personally was comfortable with as being. Doing well within the options we're looking at.
Except that you wanted to add cost out, F one, did we cost out?
The ones we did not cost out were A, D, B.
I think just A and, I just think A, for me, that's. You've cost out everything else that we're considering, so just A. It's my thing.
So do you, okay, um. I don't want to create more work for myself, but I'm okay with that, but option D, there was interest in looking at. Costing that out as well to repurpose these freshman buildings as your. The code.
And road came, this thing.
Right.
That's the one that adds the.
Basically.
Yeah.
Basically, instead of using your East freshman as a middle school, use it as your, your third.
Yeah.
High school building, new building, third high school building.
I, I did like the future thinking on that one.
Yeah, I like that too, like I said, hate to make more work for you, but.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that.
That is an intriguing one, just to have that separate.
Which option is that, is option B?
Option D is in dog, yep.
I think it used to be easier when we would put sticky notes up on the wall, that might have been a little. Little easier to make decisions.
We did that.
Know what I'm talking about, Jenny?
I remember the, the dots.
We already did that at some of the community meetings.
Yeah, we did.
Well, I think we're going to need to do that again as we narrow these options down, give the community a chance to weigh in.
Hey, Chris, I don't need to pull you backward, but is it possible to tally the options with the numbers? Like, like uh, the alphabet, say option D tallies with.
You want to see the cost on the sheet?
Yeah, um.
You put it all on one sheet, Chris, the numbers with the letters.
Yeah, with the letters, yes, it makes this easier, I was.
Because there's more than one option under, right? The grade configures that work.
If I see where option five, uh, if you can tally option five with. The, the alphabet, I, I would love to see the cost, not tally with this option five.
Basically, we'll create a summary that has this option A is option.
One.
Five for configuration, and here's the cost.
Yeah.
And here's the rubric as well. I'm sorry, what you're calling a matrix, I'm calling it.
You're, you're just saying tie this into the options, so they're.
With a summary on the bottom.
Yes, yes.
Because we'll be getting rid of all but two options on that sheet, or two grade configurations on that sheet, for sweet sheet.
Three.
Three. Oh, yeah. I could speak.
You need dots.
So I want to, I want to make sure as far as, because I'm thinking about, I got these numbers flowing through my head, because that's what I do, so. You would like us to cost out all of the options that Chris has got on his list that we want to cost out. You also want us to look at, um. If we took these buildings offline, like what would be the, the savings that we could look at with each? So kind of look at like a, a net type of cost.
If there's more additional cost at the front, but we're saving long run operational cost, I think that's what we want to understand.
And then you also.
These options.
And then you also want to look at how much of that would be offset by the state's partnership and how much would be one hundred percent.
If we know that.
I mean, yeah.
Because before I go back, um, am I able to eliminate option A, option A is the one that did all the additions on all the buildings? You sort of have that in option F already. Where it's a status quo, option A is sort of a status quo, but.
Actually, I'd like to see option A stay in.
Cost it out every option.
And cost it out.
We're not eliminating any options.
So how many options are?
Not eliminate, I thought we were eliminate.
We have eight.
Eight. Eight options, we didn't eliminate anything?
Jim, is, are they going to have an issue with costing all these out?
We could probably ballpark and get close to what the cost sets are.
I think we can work through it, uh, just so everybody knows, the OFCC does, I mean, when they create these master plans, you know, it's a pile of papers. You know, about like this on each one of these, I mean, they're very precise on. It, it takes them, you know, it's, it's a pretty big deal to put the master plans or the cost together, just, just so you know, it's. I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just telling you that is, it's not just like they snap their fingers, it's a fairly good exercise that they go through to produce the numbers.
So is it possible that we wouldn't have it by the beginning of March, if there's that much to do? I mean, they're, I'm sure they have other schools, they're not, not just talking to us. So do we truly want eight options?
I'm saying, yes, I think it's, I don't think it's a given that we're going to get it back by our next meeting, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, am I wrong?
I think they can. You know, we have numbers already on the majority, you're asking for new numbers on what I said, this A and D. Is only with two new ones we needed numbers on, the rest of them, we already have the numbers on now, they're, they're all numbers, they're twenty twenty numbers. And maybe we could get the OFCC to update those numbers, those cost sets, I'm not sure. But I think we could get them probably to kick out two additional ones for us if we. Ask them nicely and said we had a meeting come up and we really need it.
Is it possible to get the two new ones and then to? Can, can they give us like a, on the other options we have where the numbers are old, a percentage, a ballpark percentage, these costs are, have gone up fifteen percent.
Probably so, yeah.
And then.
We could ballpark it.
The number guru can do them.
There again, as long as you understand you're, you're still dealing in numbers that are up here.
Right.
What I'm more concerned about is can you get the operating numbers together in that short time?
Yeah, I mean.
That's probably a bigger chore for you.
As she laughs.
Than the OFCC.
I mean, that's something to think about, I mean, it's not like this is the only thing you're doing on a daily basis.
Yeah, because we. We have talked about that whole, you know, what would be those savings and it's. It, it is a, I, I don't want to say guess, it, it's not a guess, but it's, it is a, um, sitting down and really. Deep diving into that and projecting those things. But yeah, I mean, we just have to make it a priority and set aside things and say, this is what we're going to do and.
Well, let's set that as our goal, and if we need to reschedule, then we'll reschedule as needed. I also wanted to note that we did talk about safety as an extra piece on the matrix that we'd like to add to that as well for each of the configurations. And I also believe our latest, our last demographic study was done by someone else other than McKibben, who had been very on target with our numbers. Do we need a new demographic study as a part of this, when we're, we're basing hundreds of millions of dollars on it? It feels to me like our numbers need to be as up to date as they can possibly be.
Correct me if I'm wrong, so we had McKim and, McKibben do one, but then the OFCC doesn't work with McKibben, and so then they had someone else do it. Um, so we've got two, right now.
Down with about, within a year of each other.
Yeah.
So how long ago was that?
Twenty?
Nineteen.
I was going to say, we've done one since I've been.
And we did two in a row with McKibben and they were fairly off from where, what they had projected us to be to where we are, we're at the start of the demographic study.
Could for you?
February two thousand nineteen.
Do we need to have a new one, or is that still? Up to date enough?
I think, um. I think we're going to need one. But looking at the various options and what the enrollment is right now, how it impacts. I think as narrow down, if we get down to two or three options instead of eight. We could request that and probably get an update on how that impacts the three options that we were, get a truer. Number of that, but. I don't know.
So not at this point?
I, I don't think right at this, I know they won't do it for us again, we'd have to pay for one if we want to do that, but.
And then, and then, just as you said, the OFCC will not use that data, they have, they work with Future Think on their enrollment projections and. Uh, that's who they use and that's the numbers they will rely on, so you can have your own study done, which isn't bad, some schools do that just as a double check. Particularly if you have more faith in, uh, somebody you've used in the past, but when it comes down to it, the OFCC, if you use their program. They will only use their numbers from their demographic and enrollment guy.
What's a demographic study cost, Jenny?
It's around twenty grand.
How much?
I think we paid around twenty grand last time we did McKibben, a little over twenty, like twenty two.
When would we use their, you said final, would, would you call?
Future think.
We haven't used them yet, so when would that process take place?
Um. They, I would have to check with them if they would use, I, I truly don't know, Matt. Typically, when you lock in your master plan, they would want to have those numbers correct.
Okay.
So sometime coming up, they would probably want to do that.
So we know we're going to do one, we're going to have to, yeah.
Yeah, as we get closer and start to finalize our options, you're going to want it up to date to make sure that, hey, this is, this is legit.
Yeah.
It's still relevant.
That is what I was suggesting, that I think we have to look at the timing on that. Are there questions, board? Other comments, committee?
Lots to go through, but productive.
Yeah, and I know Chris mentioned this, you know. Diving into the cost, so, so we're looking at how much does this cost, but then. The next piece of that would be, and how would we pay for that? So I just want to let you know, I've already done some work on that, um, and so when we're ready for that. At that point, you know, we'll have that conversation, but we're not there yet, but we've already started that work and conversations have happened, so. Just letting you know that.
I don't think that would be a bad idea to have that discussion at our next meeting, because our community is going to be asking about that, that'll be their first question, I think. Is how do we pay for it, so let's go ahead and put it out there.
And I will just say too, I think I might be able to calm some fears, so it might be better to have that conversation sooner rather than later too.
That's what I'm thinking, it's, it's a lot more transparent rather than delaying the conversation, I'd rather just put it on the table for what we need to be thinking about. Um, Mrs. Darby was not, Mrs. Bodie was not able to be with us tonight. Could you reach out to her, she's going to need someone to sit down and walk through this with her, I think. So that she's as up to date as the rest of us for, before our next meeting.
Not a problem.
We'll also have the video, so she could also watch that as a preliminary education.
Yeah, that's good that we did video it, so that will help. Yeah, that's good that we did video it. So that will help us.
To hear the conversation, but I think it still might be even sitting here in the meeting and trying to keep track of the papers and all. It'd be helpful to do that with you if you could.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Um, closing comments from our committee, we'll start there. Any comments? Craig, anything?
I think it was very productive. Lot, lots of information and, I mean, you get, you gotta realize the committees would, would probably work well over a year.
Started in 2019, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's just tons of information and even the, just, just so you know, even the options that are laid out, there's hybrids that can be done between all of them. I mean, instead of doing an addition here, you can do a larger addition on this building to accommodate this. You know, there's, there's endless combinations. The ones that we are showing, I think, were the ones that made the most sense at the time with the committee. But there again, lots and lots of things to look at and talk about, so.
Craig, anything? Betsy? Betsy's got a work cut out for us here. Chris, thanks, thanks for all the time. Any comments?
No, I just look forward to getting the options and starting, take a deeper dive into it to try to narrow them down. So we can look at financials or, I think, no matter what you do, everyone's gonna talk about what's it gonna cost, what's it gonna be? So you can talk about the needs and wants, stuff like that, but in this community, until we talk price egg, no one wants to hear anything else. So we need to get there and we'll get there.
We will. Matt?
I'm good. Thank you.
Jenny? Isaac?
Chris, thank you for the presentation. I know you have more work to do, so go back. Thank you so much, everyone.
Just reiterate, thank you to both our architects and we know that it's not an easy job when we keep changing things on you. So we all appreciate all of your work.
Tito, just appreciate the work and your recommendations, since you've had more intimate work with the data and know what the needs are within the building. So thank you for bringing your professional recommendations.
We really appreciate the time and energy that's gone into this. This was, this was a nice setting to just be able to talk very freely about, the different options and find our paperwork as we were going and all the rest. So we know there's lots more work to do. This is just the start of it. And thank you for that. And I, I have a feeling that at the end of it, like what you said resonated, Jim, it will end up being a hybrid of some sort based on what the board comes up with, based on our community's input when we get that. So thank you and thank you for the flexibility with us. Appreciate it. If there's nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn the committee meeting. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Isaac. Jenny, do we need a roll call? Are we done?
You wanted to say all aye?
All in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.